I have six thirty, I'm gonna call the Monday, December sixteenth, uh, Board of Alderman Regular Meeting. Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Orsini, here's Alderman Hudson, Alderman Wilkens, Alderman Deckard, Alderman Rogers, Alderman Magley.
Yeah. If everyone stands for pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. The public stands one nation under.
Thank you all. That moves us to item four, um, public hearing, uh, we would accept the public hearing comments of the rezoning of the Dare Hathaway North Jefferson property from R one two and M one to R three. So the public hearing is open for anyone that would like to make comments regarding that.
I'll just go real quick, I'm, uh, Keenan Simon, fifteen sixteen business loop, seventy west, uh, Columbia, Missouri, I'm the civil engineer with the. Um, real general, you know, this, uh, property was identified as being, uh, R three in the long-term zoning program with the city of Centralia. That's what we're doing, requesting this evening, uh, the intent is to, uh, with that Saturday, if you have any questions, I'm available, otherwise that's. Sure as me.
Any, any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else regarding the rezoning of the Dare Hathaway North Jefferson property? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, uh, on zoning the Dare Hathaway North Jefferson property. So comments are closed, it moves us to item five, which will be comments from citizens, at this time we would accept comments from citizens, uh, come up, state your name, address, and, uh, address.
Hi, Linda Borman, either Jason Court.
Hmm.
Two things, now I already forgot one, the other one though is, I agree with Jessica in the minutes that I read from last week in that, if our guys have got time, it doesn't have to be when those trees are cut down, that we go in with stump grinder and grind them out, I mean, they can be cut down all winter, and we can do it and save a lot of money. Oh, and the other thing, these mugs, listening and watching stuff, y'all gotta speak into them, we can hear better what's being said in the audience than what's being said on these mugs.
Right, got you, we actually have a new system that just got put in, this is the first meeting we've had though.
Last week, so there should be a huge quality difference in the videos.
Yep, so, well, thank you.
Yeah, you all see their good TV.
I thought it, but I didn't know what it meant.
Okay, any other, oh, we have another?
Yeah, I'm Jessica Hutton, um, the trees that are coming down, instead of us not replacing them, why don't we start a program where people could sponsor in memory of a loved one? Sponsor tree, put a little plaque on it, that way we're replanting as we're cutting down, we're not the trees, but I almost got them down and we're gonna look fair. So why not let the community help pay the fruits? So we are looking at replanting, and the state has a program, um, where we can get free trees, and we're planning, we're working with the tree board, we're gonna be replanting responsibly. But we do actually have a memorial tree program through our parks department, and, um, we, I know there's, um, a few trees over here in the city square, and they've got some at the city park, but yeah, if you talk to the Earl, is there already some of them?
We're living a nice one on the corner, it's like, you know, I'd rather put a memory of somebody and stick something else there than.
We're gonna have more than a couple of varieties of trees too, so we're gonna have several varieties of trees, so we don't have a, a fight, a blight that costs us all our trees at one time, yeah.
Morgan, either Jason Court, I have a map here showing part of the, uh, original town of Centralia, uh, at the, uh, planning and zoning meeting the other day, we discussed, uh, uh, the direction of the floor, changing some of the zoning ordinances, uh, so that the seven, in the duplex and then the, uh, R two and R three zoning, uh, it said six thousand square feet per lot, we changed that to seven thousand square feet per lot. There was one thing about that, that I didn't think about at the time, here's a map showing some lots in town that have been changed, uh, this is where two lots were on a corner, uh, those lots are fifty foot by a hundred twenty foot, so they're six thousand square feet apiece, and the lots were changed, so that the orientation was changed, and so now they're sixty foot by one hundred foot lots. And that's been done with the number, there's eight lots shown here that, where that's been done, um, we really didn't discuss that, but this has been done in the past in town, and I don't think we really intended to change that, what we were talking about was, uh, the seven thousand square feet was new development. And this is more of an infill than it is new development, I'm not sure how you accommodate that.
Is there something built on it?
Yes, there are houses on these.
And the weekend, I mean, whatever change, you can always grandfather, whatever exists.
Well, I, I realize, these would be grandfathered in, but I'm not sure that we wanna do away with allowing somebody to do this, because the frontage changed from fifty foot wide to sixty foot wide, which is really not a bad thing, and that meets the current ordinance. Six thousand square feet, which meets the current ordinance, what we were changing now, it was to seven thousand, these would no longer be allowed, do we want to do that? I really don't think that necessarily in these older parts of town, that we wanna do that, I agree with that in the newer parts of town.
You want to bring the discussion back to P and Z?
You guys need to, uh, kinda discuss it tonight and give us some direction, because, uh.
Are there certain areas, Don, that you're aware of, that like, where this is more prevalent, you said the older part of town?
Yo, the original town of Centralia, there are some other areas where the, uh, similar things have happened. Uh, in G D Rollins, it's been done, but over there, some of the lots that I know of that were done, actually beat the seven thousand square feet, because they were bigger lots.
It boils down to existing, existing older, the, the lot sizes from,
Yes.
older properties, where you don't, you have some, what I call more of a postage stamp size.
That's right.
And those, I think we need to protect it, that they, I, I, the sixty foot, I think, sets a precedent to have a bigger home built, you know, versus a, two small ones on a lot that could make a bigger home, there's ways to argue about that, but, so I think that we need to make provisions, the provision needs to be that if somebody has a, I don't know, a, 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 a fifty by ninety, or, you know, what.
In this case, these lots, they could have built two houses on them, either way they went, they have more frontage, uh, when they actually turned these lots, like what they, uh, what was done, and you can look at the drawings.
But, we're talking about sixty foot across, but maintaining the sixty foot.
Yeah, and that was a sixty foot.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, I, I know where they've done that too, I mean, when we've turned and they went to another street, because it was on a corner, you could turn it, and the long, the address could be to where it was, it was facing, uh, and the sixty foot wide was being met, that was a key criteria, so I don't, I don't want us to lose that, I don't think, because we wanna be able to develop.
Part of the thing that we were discussing was, you know, these infill lots, we think that that's a good thing, going with the infill lot, and, and trying to develop some of these older areas in town and, or redevelop them. That's kinda what this boils down to, is, is the infill, and we weren't trying to really get away with that, but we were trying to accommodate the seven thousand square feet for the residential standard in the R one zoning, and we were primarily looking at it with new subdivisions and not with the older subdivision, so there, you know, there might need to be a, a way of, of modifying that, so that most of those could be done. I mean, we weren't trying to say the seven, that we wanna go to six thousand square feet on the residential lots, especially for new development, but we were trying to, uh, we really didn't think about this situation, I didn't think about it until after.
How many situations are there like that, what do you?
There's, there's a number of.
Oh, boring to think.
Yeah, there's more than you.
Just like you guys have a business district, you know, like you have a business district that just defines like your downtown area for Centralia, and the question is, is this planning and zoning, this is the board, as you guys, and you guys are getting ready to, you know, redo your comprehensive plan too, which means we'll be looking back at the, the map and, and the zoning districts too, you guys could carve out like an R one O for like old part of Centralia, R one N for new, you can take a look at, you know, you guys could look at like subdivision rules and regulations for new build.
There's a number of ways it could be done, and, and one of the things that we did talk about was doing a plan development, and something like this could fall under that possibly. So, I mean, there's a number of ways of doing it, but I don't think we were trying to get rid of this when we were talking about it the other night. How to plan that zone.
Right.
Question is, is, I mean, I think for planning and zoning, you guys do know we do have to redo the comprehensive plan, is it worth starting to piecemeal changing the zoning sizes, or do you guys wanna do it as a process as you guys start to look at the comprehensive plan? That has to be done, um, by, by next year, so I mean, we have a big long process where this is gonna start rolling out, so the question I pitch back to you all is, do you wanna piecemeal this, or do you guys wanna maybe like bring this all together as that moves forward?
Well, I think that's what happened here, because we were trying to piecemeal it, and didn't think about all the consequences, because, you know, you, you piecemeal things, a, a lot of times there's unforeseen consequences. So it needs to be looked at a little more comprehensively.
Well, that would go in conjunction with the work that's gonna be done by the,
I mean, it's gonna be a lot of work.
Planning, zoning, to go with that process, right, so, maybe that's when we, we address it and we, we work it out there as we go through it.
Everybody understand, like, does the Board of Aldermen understand what we're talking about, like, everybody, okay, yeah.
I mean, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I'm not saying don't go forward to what we, uh, we're talking about, but I do think that this needs to be considered, at least in some aspect, that, that maybe it should be considered to be allowed, uh, and, and there would be a number of ways of doing that.
Wouldn't we just, you know, variants?
No, not a variance, variance is, I mean, variance is for narrow, narrow circumstances, they're to be very, very, very rarely used, and what you guys are talking about is, I, I just, I hear what Don's saying, and then seeing the picture really drives it home. I mean, if you move forward to make a change to R one and make R two and R three consistent with R one, what you could potentially do is if somebody tore one of these houses down in the future, your future planning and zoning folks and your city administrator would be looking at this as well, you know, you, you're not gonna need the lot requirements to be able to build back a home.
We wanna be able to do that, because it, it provides, in the whole comprehensive plan, it, it provides opportunity for two-bedroom, one-bath homes, that kinda thing on those lots that they would fit on properly, which we've seen kind of in town already, which gives an economic group of people the opportunity to be owner of home versus not, right, and, and we have the ordinances to keep those properties up.
There, there are two things.
Right.
One, as, as far as, uh, being a variance, that's basically a judicial decision, and that doesn't really apply to what we're talking about, uh, so you'd have to find a different. Second thing is, is that older lots are grandfathered in, grandfathered in is prior to, uh, nineteen sixty-one, I think, and these were, some of these were created after that, but they were created within the ordinance of what we have, so we need to, you know, look at how that could be maintained. Any other questions?
So, any other comments from citizens? At this time, um, then I'll close comments from citizens, and that moves to the consent agenda, consent agenda, uh, I would, I would accept the motion to accept, uh, all of A, B, C, D, and F, all three F, uh, I have a first, second, all in favor, all opposed, I ask that it moves to the council payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Entertain a motion for that.
What was the annual maintenance, the capital list annual maintenance?
For our AMI meter, for what's going on.
We'd move that we accept for payments, and the council payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, the amount nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Uh, first and second, that we accept accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, all in favor, all opposed, passes. Moves us now to, um, action agenda legal, um, motion to allow the attorney to draft an ordinance to change the size requirements of part two and R three to match part one, um.
Given the discussion, Steve Justin, it sounds like the direction would be to move us back to the P and Z and not. And would preserve the ability to have such a thing as, as a sixty by one hundred lot.
We're discussing possibility of waiting until.
Incorporate it into the comprehensive plan.
Or would it be any new builds?
You could tinker with the subdivision ordinance, or something to that, you know, that, that section of it, but just the question becomes, it's kind of a greater question, do we, and we, we know we're rolling out with a comprehensive, and we'll, I'll do whatever, I'll pitch it back, or if you want, but you know, we're rolling out with a comprehensive plan, do we wanna do this now? Do we wanna try to put that into the larger discussion when they start looking at the maps and maybe defining where the boundary, it's up to you all, I could probably do an ordinance for new construction in the subdivision section of a code, but what happens if you've got somebody, I guess, that wants to not build a subdivision and ends up wanting to build a house? House, I don't know.
We want to, because doing this for a reason, do we want? Reason to begin with, or do we just wanna kick it back?
This isn't gonna help hurt the.
This isn't gonna affect the.
The rezoning, correct?
The rezoning, half of the property, this is separate from the Hathaway. No, 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 yeah, I, I, I should have clarified that, 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 that's usually two totally separate deals, so, no.
If you need to approve whatever before you can proceed.
So, the lot sizes that P and Z are looking at changing are for single-family homes and duplexes, um, Mr. Hathaway's development does not involve single-family homes or duplexes. It's a multifamily development.
So what we're looking for.
We move that when we go with the.
So you're proposing to remove that consideration of that, and take it into the overall comprehensive plan?
Even if that delays, it took us some comprehensive plan, it took us several years to do that last time.
It has, it has to be, it has to be done within a year, so there's like a statutory frame, timeframe, like there's a pull trigger, so we have to get this moving.
I would recommend that the P and Z committee work to provide us with some better land where we want this, to brand this particular needle, so that we can include it in the comprehensive plan.
You guys can start taking a look at, like, there's district boundaries, like, for instance, Don, that, you know, like, you're talking about, you know, downtown, old town, new town, feel like there should be a funky town in here somewhere, but you know, I don't know.
So. I entertain a motion, uh, for recommendation back to the, to the board, and what it remains to. Uh, I have a first, second to, uh, put this back to the planning, zoning to look at it, and, and, uh, give guidance back to the, to the city. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, we'll make sure that we put that back on the agenda to take up. That moves us to item B, um, legal, a rezoning of two parts of the land at North Jefferson, uh, it's bill number two five five seven, I would be, uh, is there any discussion or need for discussion? If not, then I would entertain a, uh, motion for the first reading by title only of, uh, bill number two five five seven.
Bill number be given its first, bill number two five five seven be given its first reading by title only, second.
Yeah, first and a second, that bill number two five five seven be given its rea, first reading by title only, all in favor? All opposed, to pass its first reading, please.
An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centralia, Missouri, from Southern District R one and M one to zone District R three and amending the zoning District man of forty. Bill, bill number two five five seven be given a second reading by title only, second.
Yeah, first and a second, that bill number two five five seven be given a second reading by title only, all in favor, all opposed, pass its second reading, please.
An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centralia, Missouri, from Southern District R one and M one to zone District R three and amending the zoning District. And move that bill number two five five seven be adopted by roll call vote, second.
Uh, first and second, that bill number two five five seven be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor? All opposed, passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Orsini.
Aye.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkens.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
Bill number two five five seven passed, we find a roll call vote, unanimous, please, uh, ordinance number please.
Three one nine.
Thank you, that moves us to C, discussion, uh, recommendation to remove two Aldermen from the Planning and Zoning Commission and displace the two citizens. Um, this was discussed during planning and zoning, um, since I've been the mayor, it seems at times that we get instantly pushed into the opportunity to be part of, uh, solutions that would be offered through the board, which we need to, I think, stay out of, we need to be there, I think, in a consultative manner, um, and answer questions, that kinda thing, versus be, be, because it, 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 tends to absolutely look like potentially conflict of interest potentially against us, for us then to decide from the recommendation being sent to us, so I think that we need to be, be, we need to withdraw ourselves from being too, uh, actively involved in those discussions, other than when it's specifically a need for that, and so that's kinda how we, we were talking about it, so that's kinda where that is, and, and talking to the, um, to the board, they, they were, they were talking about going with two, I think we talked, you know, adding three and five and so forth, and I think two was the number we ended up on, just to have two more citizens at large to be able to be on that, on that group, uh, a little more diversity, a, a couple more minds thinking about it, and a little more manageable for the mayor, and us to be able to find two qualified people that would be wanting to do it, and to maintain that role of people on an ongoing basis right now, and then from there, decide what that looks like in the, in the future.
We don't have a problem filling those roles, do we?
Well, um.
I mean, do they have to have a certain number of people?
Well, there'd be two more people that would be placed on the, on the, on the, on the board, for the.
You got those people.
I, I don't got those people, no, but I have, unlike the park board, I have a, a bench of people, uh, I don't have a bench of people for the planning and zoning, but I will start to look to recruit a couple of people, uh, based upon people that, uh, we'll make it, make people wear online, that we're looking for a couple of people that wanna do it, those kinda things, and we'll start to get the word out, um.
So they will be on until you find a replacement.
Oh, these will be two newly appointed positions that will have a term. The others will, whoever's existing will be in the terms that they're in, and will be re-upped or, or replaced.
Sydney, I'll have to write up the new ordinance, and I'll have to have a public hearing and.
Yeah, well, that's what that's about, so, um.
And what you're wanting, so, just like, I mean, whatever you guys specify, like, so if the board says, we want you to draft a motion to send a planning and zoning to add two additional citizens to the board, I will draft that ordinance very specifically, that I send it to them for consideration, and it comes back here exactly the way you direct me to draft it with their recommendations, like, and then so it kinda keeps cycling back.
Go through the proper process, I think it's the way it needs to go, so, I mean, it, it, it's good, so, I would entertain a motion to, to do that, to send it back to two people, for them to, to look at, uh, adding two people to their, their role of.
In removing.
Of voting, removing all of them.
Make a motion, the, the way I started, to, uh, draft some ordinance, and then get to the P and Z to remove the two sitting off and move from the P and Z and citizens at large.
Uh, first and second, um, to send to the attorney to draft a proposal to the, uh, planning and zoning of removing the two, uh, Alder people, uh, on the board that are non-voting, uh, to two, uh, adding two voting constituents of the, of the public citizenship. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passing.
David, how come you smile? He's just a happy guy.
Exactly.
One let me die.
Oh, man.
Here, here.
All right, good, that moves us to D. Uh, legal calling for the twenty twenty-five city election, uh, this is, it's bill number two five five eight, do you wanna touch on that at all, just for.
Yeah, this is the regular municipal election, um, where this side of the dais is up for election this year, and, um, Maryland as city collector. And Maryland, what is the, I'm sorry, what is the last date of file?
December thirty-first, nine PM.
And move that bill number two five five eight be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Uh, first and a second, uh, that bill new, bill number two five five eight be given its first reading by title only, all in favor? All opposed, first reading, please.
Bill's free at Norton's in title, ordinance calling for jumping, it'll be held on Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the municipal election days will last three, all of them, for two years term, and the bill number two five five eight be given its second reading by title only.
Uh, first and second, that bill number two five five eight be given its second reading by title only, all in favor, all opposed, pass its second reading, please.
Bill's free at Garden and Center, the ordinance calling for jumping, it'll be held on Tuesday, April twenty twenty-five, and the municipal election days will last three, all of them, for two years term, and the municipal election days will last three, for two years term. The bill number two five five eight be asked by roll call vote, second.
Uh, first and second, that bill number two five five eight be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor? All opposed, passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Orsini, aye, Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkens.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Magley.
Okay, bill two five five eight passes, ordinance number. Move to E, motion to allow the attorney to update ordinance from code, uh, eighteen dash seven point one B to align the state law, you wanna update us on that?
So basically, state law in Missouri, we are a no helmet law state, so, your code talks about the requirement to wear a helmet, where the state law says you don't have to have one. I will remind the board that cities can always be more restrictive in this regard, so where it says you don't need to ride one within the city limits, you could require it, um, so I just wanna throw that out there. For some reason, somebody was very adamant about, you know, keeping helmets on here in the community, you could still do that, there are some places, like, I think Sedalia, Missouri requires you to still ride with a helmet with your, if you're within the city limits. But otherwise, the rest of the state, you know, once you leave the city limits, you can take it off and throw it on the ground and. Are you P K A?
I don't know, I think it should probably align with the state, I mean, it makes it harder for the police department, I mean, they're, they're being the bad guys then when the state law passed and.
Makes it harder for the rider.
I, I wouldn't get on a motorcycle without a helmet, but that's your personal preference, I guess, when.
So, is Missouri going to, uh, you have to wear helmets again?
No.
We're gonna do that?
No, 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 we already had it, we, we had it, the state had it too, the state banned it, and the fact that you had to wait, they passed a no helmet law.
We're no, we're no helmet.
Nobody.
But we have it in Centralia, so if somebody doesn't have a helmet and they're driving through and they stop here, they'd be breaking the law potentially.
We, we didn't change it, I guess.
That's what we're asking, or not.
So we can change it, it's easy enough, you know, we'll conform to state law, or you guys can keep it the way it is, I'm just making sure you guys know that there's two options you, you have options here.
I would favor keeping it as is. It, because it's not just the person, you know, besides, I'm gonna go out there and, you know, idiot, not riding with a helmet, and then we all pay the bills, because we're all paying the Medicare bill, Medicaid.
But, but don't we do the same thing when people drink and smoke themselves to death?
Yes, but we also have laws against drunk.
Well, that is drunk driving, I'm just saying, I, I just, I don't know at what point do we, we. I, I'm talking about the long-term effect, it affects us, let's say you have to go through cancer treatment and everything else, and we bear the cost in our, our, you don't question about it, we bear the cost in our. That's what I'm saying about it. I don't need, I haven't moved back anymore.
I have a motorcycle, I wear a helmet.
I, I did too.
Yeah, well, then I would wear it.
You are crazy drivers.
See, they have the motorcycle, because the people got four wheels underneath them, they're.
Most of the way our attorney to update the limits, eighteen dash seven, one B, align the state law.
Uh, first and second, the align the state law, and that to be directed towards alternative grass, uh, ordinance, uh, all in favor? All opposed, have one nay, um, passes, thank you, uh, that moves us. J, I mean, uh, to, a motion to accept tree removal bid from, uh, Breaks Street Care to remove three ash trees in the Centralia City Cemetery.
How many other bids, did we get any other bids on this, or just? Just for the Earl's venue that all along, right?
I don't believe that.
Oh, it's not?
One, the bid for the city removal of trees, and, um, it could possibly be since he's already here, that's why he came in, that's the lowest bid this time around. This was the lowest bid. This was the lowest bid.
There's only, on the notes, there were four.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
That's, uh. Stumps, I thought we were grinding these stumps.
Um.
I mean, we got to grind it, why aren't we grinding cemetery stuff?
So.
It's in the bid.
Mm-hmm. If they are anywhere near a monument, um, we probably do not want our guys grinding them.
Most of them.
I know one of them, I know, I know one of them is, um, the top one that costs more than the other three, two trees, um, is over several. I'm not sure about the other two.
Are you talking about the tree, are you talking about, so, let me get this right, are you talking about them taking the tree down and they would, then we would grind the stump?
Yeah.
So he's not, I don't think he's saying taking the tree down over the monument.
Right, but the, the stump is by.
Okay, I understand, yeah, so if they got a machine there.
If I would want.
Ten trees is thirty-seven hundred dollars, I mean.
This is, this is for the three trees.
If you have nine hundred, two thousand or something.
They're eighty, more than. Uh, I, being paid out of cemetery funds?
Yes.
I don't think I want to work in the cemetery, I don't. I don't want to lie about it, whether it's still.
Or some of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Three, we talk.
Three. Three. That's a pretty good size. I'm glad we got four bids, to be honest with you, it's getting harder to get bids of any kind, seems like, for any kind of service, so at least we got four bids, but.
I move that we accept the tree removal bid from Breaks Street Care to remove the three ash trees.
Okay. At first and a second, to accept the removal bid from Breaks Street Care, um, to move three ash trees in the city, uh, cemetery. All in favor? All opposed, passes. Move to old business. Do any old business. This time. Hearing none, I'll move on to new business, we have new business at this time. And that moves us to item nine, which is the mayor, the mayor has nothing to say, nothing to, anybody have to speak about, so I'll pass it then to the city administrator.
It has been a busy month, we've had, um, a lot of meetings, obviously, um. There's also a lot of end-of-the-year compliance reports that are due, I did turn in the E I, ERA report and stuff.
What is that?
Oh, hmm.
What is that acronym for?
Can't tell you the acronym.
Well, what is it then?
Um, so it had to do with our bond. On our water and sewer project. So I had to get, I worked with our, our, um. Bond. Council. This is where, um, but worked with them to make sure you've got that all done accurately.
So, something, it's a little, little maybe new business, one, one thing I recommend that we do o- on the regional planning committee, which I'm a part of, they, they, Hallsville did a, uh, talking about the, uh, comprehensive plan. We, we wanna reach out to those folks and see what kind of help that we can get from them, for grants and so forth, for the comprehensive plan maybe, because they, they've done quite a bit of it. And just recently with Hallsville, so, um. Because of the load that we have on you and your department and everything that's going on, we got budget coming and everything like that, there's a lot to it, so we probably should look into making sure we're taking advantage of that, if there's a lot to do. Help us with that.
I have begun, um, pre, pre-planning with the budget and seeing what we've got currently with expenses and revenues, to see if we have any extra money, um, to pull more money out for trees this, um, this go-around. Um. Revenues are looking pretty tight. And expenses held pretty constant, so I'm not sure. If we're gonna, if that's gonna happen or not, I'll know closer. To time, um. Something else that's gonna. Okay, it went away.
Any questions for the city administrator, just for what? Yeah, that means. Move on to our city attorney.
So been working with Tara on creating a master contract agreement with contractors that do contract business here, um, within the city of Centrae, but this one is specifically for any contractors that will be utilizing ARPA funds as we start to wrap that up, so there are a lot of extra federal requirements that go into any contract that anybody that has any project that touches ARPA. I've sent up along to Tara, right now it just needs to be kind of screwed up, I had one, the file ended up getting corrupted, I ended up having to pull it and transfer it from a PDF, and anytime you transfer something from a PDF to Word, it, it doesn't speak the right language, so it just needs some help, but we've got that. Formatting?
First, formatting on it? Don't pull it directly into Word, pull it into a Google Doc and serve the formatting better from the, uh, from the PDF, and then pull that down and use it as a Word doc.
Wish you would have known that last week. So Marilyn took a crack at adjusting it, I added a little bit more of it today and then sent it back to Tara, it still needs a little bit, but given that we have like, is it three or four contracts that need to be signed and executed? Yeah, four within the next couple, like, within the next week and a half, at this point, it doesn't need to be pretty, like, everything in there that needs to be in there is in there at this point, if it's not all completely aligned, it's just, we're gonna have to probably just run with it, but that's been done. Um, the other piece, as I sent across to Tara and to Chief today, I've been looking at just, you know, the, we've got that police clerk position that we're gonna be working on, and been looking at what some other cities have done with the definition and, you know, the working document for what is a police clerk, so I sent across one example today, Tara and Chief, so that we can start, you know, that process and putting our head around that. Um. So, and then of course, I'm keeping an eye on what's being pre-filled in the legislature, so. They, they are definitely going to be, when I say they, there's a large group that's going to be coming after just sales taxes, taxes, I mean, when I'm talking tax cuts. Everybody hates taxes, I hate taxes, death and taxes, I hate them both, but, um, some of them are essential for us to do what we need to do, and there've been a lot of pre-file bills hacking everything from feminine hygiene products, food, sales taxes back up there, there's eight different bills on whacking food tax, sales tax, so. It, it's gonna be entertaining.
That, that's, that, that's a real, that's pretty detrimental and, uh, depending on how, where it, how it goes in effect, it could be pretty debilitating for all of these, I think probably they're, they're smaller scale, but they get a lot of revenue from that.
That's gonna start in January.
Like I said a few months ago. Reach out to the village of Franklinville, New York, um, they're a small town after Leawood and Western New York, where there is no tax, um, groceries. Be held.
Probably got a rich uncle somewhere from this generation's back, gave him a lot of money or something.
No, I mean, you're saying.
No, I'm just saying, somebody, I don't know. They got a lot of gold shooting out somewhere around her, but I get what you're saying, yeah, see, what have they done, best practice to, to be able to handle it.
They're kind of a loser about the same.
Yeah.
Instead of money payers.
And the challenge I think.
And they're also a single large, uh, a single large employer.
The, the thing that worries me the most is, is we become more and more constrained with, with, with revenues versus outgoing monies, right? It, it's upside down, it's, it's, it's not keeping up with one another. Us, the taxpayers end up paying for it at the meter, at, at, up for the service of the, of the, of the, of the trash, or whatever it may be. Um, and keeping personnel, uh, good department, uh, people in all phases, uh, and competing for them, it's. It worries me, because at what point, you know, I hate constituents of Centrae, the taxpayer haven't paid them, but, uh, and we're trying to protect against that, so that's, that's the thing, if anything keeps me up at night, something like that, so.
What's the pay, a lot more than you got, what, paying you in the versus where, paying you in, if you have your caps.
That's true. So.
So, you're telling me.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you for your help in all you do, uh, that moves us to our city clerk.
I really had a lot, touched on it, um, well, it goes, it's crazy, it made me think that we're doing year, end of year rollover thing, you feel already again, seems like we just did that, but it's in high gear under here, um. Filings, as she mentioned, reminder that filings are open Monday through Friday, eight to five, in the August seventh first, one refiled. And one special register. So plenty of time. Just don't forget.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Yeah, thank you, thank what you've been doing too, I know you guys. Appreciate your board, um, as may arise, we have anything, as may arise. Have a first and a second to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed. Stand adjourned, thank you for your time, and you're up.